We will proceed on to item number four announcements and presentations. The first one, I will ask the city clerk.
Thank you. The storm drainage and flood protection fee election ballots will be counted on Wednesday, June 16th, 2021, beginning at 10:00 a.m. in San Bruno City Hall, Conference Room 115. That the ballot counting can be observed via Zoom and in person with limited capacity. Currently, we expect that around 10 members of the public may be able to fit in the room. But of course, we'll adjust and we will make that public as we get closer to the time. The ballot, where am I? The Zoom link will be posted and available on the city's website The results of the tabulation are expected to be announced at the June 22nd, 2021, City Council meeting and will be certified by resolution. However, I do want to note that once we have completed the ballot counting, we will be posting the unofficial results to the city website as soon as the ballot counting is completed so that people will at least have an idea of where we stand.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Uh, next item is item B. Join us for a community meeting on mountain flying safety that will be held on Monday, June 21st at 6:00 p.m. The community meeting will include a presentation and guest speaker from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. The meeting will be conducted via Zoom and a link will be available soon on the city's homepage at www.sanbruno.ca.gov. And I appreciate for us having that because as you know, many communities are experiencing that and so this is the proper agency and so they will be there to conduct meeting. Item number C, receive update on COVID-19 response apps. Jennifer Dianos, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. We've pulled up the presentation here. My name is Jennifer Dianos. I'm the Assistant to the City Manager and I'm here on behalf of the Emergency Operations Center. Public information teams are providing with the COVID-19 update. I'm, my clicker isn't working here. There we go. Okay, so this evening's agenda, I will go over the Beyond the Blueprint. That's the now famous June 15th date that's coming up next week. COVID-19 vaccination availability statistics and a program for cash prizes from the state, city services and resources. And then I'll be available for questions after that. So I'll start with the Beyond the Blueprint. This is the state of California ending the blueprint for a safer economy. So for the last year, more than a year, we've underwent changes to businesses and operations and modifications to how we go into the marketplaces. And this is going to change beginning June 15th. As of that date, businesses may return to usual operations similar to what was before COVID. If we can all remember that, it seems like it was yesterday and forever ago. With the exceptions of mega events, and a mega event is defined as 5,000 people indoors and 10,000 people outdoors. After June 15th, there will be no restrictions for capacity limitations and physical distancing. Masking and face coverings will be required per the California Department of Public Health Guidance. That will remain current. Travelers should follow the CDC and the California Department of Health Travel Advisory and that will identify what is and is not recommended. And some employers are, most employers in California are subject to CalOSHA requirements and those will stay as indicated by OSHA. So that is separate from the June 15th date. As of today, it stands that we still remain in the yellow tier. And so we'll be in the yellow tier for the last week of the blueprint for a safer economy. The COVID-19 vaccination, so with the increase in vaccinations and the decrease in COVID cases, we do have here in San Bruno, our local statistics. As of yesterday, June 7th, 79.5% of our population 12 and above have been vaccinated. 67 to 77, that's four census tracts within our healthy equity quartile have been vaccinated. And that's in comparison to the countywide statistics. Countywide, we're at 84.8 for 16 and above and 82.9 for 12 and above, also as of yesterday, June 7th. In the health quartile, it's 71.6% of our population and for 16 and over, excuse me, and 67.9 for 12 and above. In comparison to the nationwide goal, that goal was always 70%. And so we've met or exceeded that to some extent. The vaccine availability is now broad and so Californians aged 12 and over are eligible for vaccinations. There are local vaccination sites that are available and most, if not all, do not require appointments. There's a comprehensive list available on our county health website and that's smchealth.org. And there's a direct link on this slide and on our website to bring you to that calendar directly. You can also go to myturn.ca.gov and that includes a more broader scope for region-wide availability in pharmacies. And for those that don't have access to the internet, there's a phone number that's available through the state that has the same information and that number is 833-422-4255. So in addition to getting vaccinated, there's, there's a wide variety of locations that you can go to get vaccinated and I'm just going to pick one that I think is pretty great. That's a good idea and opportunity for those who have not yet been vaccinated. But it will be available at the Samatelle County Fair. And that's going to start this weekend. It will be at Gate 5 at 1346 Saratoga Drive in Samatelle. Not only will you get the benefit of being vaccinated, there's free admission for the vaccinated individual at the county fair itself. You'll get $20 food voucher to enjoy at the county fair and for free ride tickets. That all is free and all are welcome regardless of immigration status. There are several other locations, including high, local high schools. SFO is hosting a vaccination site and so there are plenty of opportunities. This just happens to be a fun one here. And if that's not enough, the state of California is also offering Vax for the Win. And this is really a cash incentive for those that have and have not been vaccinated yet. So the three components that are on the screen. 10 winners will be selected on June 15th to receive 1.5 million in a lottery style winning. There's a drawing for $50,000 on Friday. This past Friday, 15 people were selected to win this drawing and there's going to be another 15 this upcoming Friday on June 11th. And for those that haven't been vaccinated, there's an opportunity to get a $50 gift card. So until funds are depleted, starting late in May, the first 2 million Californians that start and complete the vaccination can receive a $50 gift card. And if you have already been vaccinated, don't worry because you don't really have, you don't have to do anything to get entered into the drawing. So you're automatically entered once you're vaccinated. And the good news is that the $50,000 drawing last Friday, there were several Bay Area winners, unfortunately not in Samatelle County, but they were local nonetheless. City services and resources. Our Emergency Operations Center remains activated and will continue to monitor status. That's even after the June 15th date. There are no major changes to city services since our last report out to the City Council with the exception of a couple of items. So the public water fountains have reopened and that's as of last week. Our team is in process of developing a plan for the senior center reopening. It's currently underway and will be announced once that plan is available. And this is not a change, but just a reminder, indoor rentals at the recreation center will remain closed due to the construction of the new recreation and aquatic center that we just discussed. Customer service counters will remain open for in-person assistance. Appointments are encouraged but not required. And we do have as a convenience, this has remained available throughout COVID, but we have a payment center that's on our city's homepage. And so that would really route you to the appropriate webpage to make a payment for your water bill, to make a payment for your city net services bill. So it's all in one, one page. So it's convenient, one-stop shop. And lastly, the California COVID-19 rent relief. So don't be thrown off by the title. It is called rent relief, but it is for both rent and utilities. This is for financial assistance for those that are income-eligible renters and landlords. And this program is really designed to assist those that are impacted by COVID-19 to assist with unpaid back due rent and utilities. And so you can check eligibility and you can apply at housingiskey.com. This is a program that has been available and remains available. There is a portal in English. There's another portal in Spanish and both are available on the state website. Earlier today, I don't have a slide, but earlier today, the county did also announce a program for relief for small businesses that will waive permit fees from the county health department. And so that program is also designed to support small businesses and will be reflected in the annual permit renewals. And so more information will be forthcoming on that. But that was announced and it is a token of support from, from the county and to support our, our local businesses. And that's all I have for you this evening. Just a reminder to sign up for SMC Alert for emergency notifications and to follow us on social media. And with that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jennifer, for the report and the update. Any questions from colleagues? Okay, not seeing any. If we could stop sharing the
Thank you.
Screen. Thank you very much again. Okay, next we're going to move on to item D. If we could bring in our mosquito abatement? Or director member, please?
I do have him coming in. It's taking a little longer than normal.
No problem. Item D is to issue a proclamation declaring Mosquito Awareness Week as of June, for June 20th through the 26th of 2021. I see he is with us and I will read a few of the wherethes and I will virtually hand it to Robert and he can please say a few words to, to update us. Whereas the district works with mosquito and vector control districts throughout California, the United States Environmental Protection Agency and the State Department of Public Health to reduce pesticide risks to humans from mosquito and vector-borne diseases and nuisance. And whereas National Mosquito Control Awareness Week will increase the public's awareness of the threat of diseases and encourage the public to take action in preventing mosquito transmitted diseases and will highlight the activities of the various mosquito and vector research and control agencies working to minimize the health threat within California. Now therefore, I Rico, the Medina Mayor of the City of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim the week of June 20th through the 26th, 2021 as Mosquito Control Awareness Week in the City of San Bruno. And I ask that all citizens become a part of the team to quote, "Fight the bite." And now I'd like to turn it over to who represents the City of San Bruno exceptionally well and has always been willing to do that for us. It's Rico and your Director Board Member Rico.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council and Staff. I'm Robert Rico, the City of San Bruno's Trustee to the Samatelle County Mosquito and Vector Control District. And I'm here to accept the city's proclamation recognizing Mosquito Awareness Week here in San Bruno. On behalf of the Samatelle County Mosquito and Vector Control, I'm happy to accept this proclamation. I would like to read a short prepared statement which is as follows. The district thanks the council for actively supporting the district through this proclamation and legislatively. The district thanks the city, its staff and its residents for their continued assistance as we fight the bite. Park staff have reported dead birds, which the district has been able to promptly pick up and test for West Nile virus and have found to be carrying West Nile virus. They've been able to take the appropriate actions faster. Residents continue to report their mosquito concerns. Just a little bit about how I, as your trustee, participate on the district's Board of Trustees. I continue to serve on the district's legislative committee as we track pending state and federal bills that may affect our San Bruno community, Samatelle County and the district. And we meet regularly with various legislators. I continue to chair the Policy and Procedures Committee where we update district policies and procedures as required by county, state and federal requirements. And finally, I continue to serve on the Finance Committee where we monthly review the district's finances and budgets as well as review the district's five-year plan and budget to ensure that the district can continue to provide the needed and desired services for the residents of Samatelle County and the city of San Bruno. Together, the city and its residents continue to work as a team, fighting the bite either by calling the district at 650-344-8592 or going to the webpage www.smcmbcd.org. Thank you for your proclamation and allowing me to give the short district update.
No, and thank you for being here to accept it. And again, we do appreciate what you do and what you have been doing to represent San Bruno and the information and reports that you give the council on a timely fashion. So thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, we will move on to item E. Receive presentation from the Fire and Police Chiefs regarding the city's requirements for the use of safe and sane fireworks in San Bruno and San Bruno's policies. And I know that as I had asked for this to be up earlier than it usually is because as we know, last year there was, we started receiving emails. I have started to receive them and I thought it was best for us to put this on the agenda for the community to hear it and get an earlier update. And I would turn it over to either, I believe, the Fire Chief first.
Yes, I'm here.
Chief.
Great. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. Ari Delay, your Fire Chief. Thank you very much for having us here this evening. We're here to present information regarding the safety enforcement for this year's fireworks and 4th of July event. I'm joined here this evening by my colleague, Police Chief Ryan Johansson. And we're already on the next slide. I will start out by presenting the Fire Department's preparations for this year's firework and 4th of July celebrations. First and foremost, I wanted to highlight the fact that the San Bruno Fire Department in coordination with the San Bruno Police Department will be in what we call Unified Command for this event. This is an important management practice that we have. That is something that we've always done in the past and it's an important structure that we provide to create a seamless response for both fire and law enforcement personnel for any potential event that happens during the 4th of July itself. We will have a Unified Command post that will allow us to co-locate and provide a seamless and coordinated response to any 4th of July events of the day. And this year, as we have done in the past, the San Bruno Fire Department will provide additional equipment and staff during the 4th of July event. And this also will provide us an opportunity to utilize the new Type 6 engine. If anybody recalls, we recently were granted a Type 6 engine for the city of San Bruno from CalOES and that's a great asset to have for any type of vegetation fires that we may have in the city and respond to any other emergencies throughout the city. The San Bruno Fire Department will also have all of our fire prevention staff on duty for the 4th to provide fire investigation services as necessary. And the San Bruno Fire Department and Police Department have created a joint public service announcement that was filled by City Net Services and will be aired on Channel 1 as well as we are currently in the process of sending out a citywide mailer, a postcard with some of the safety issues associated with the 4th. Our Fire Prevention Department or Division has also conducted mandatory safety meetings with all the booth operators to make sure that they are really up to date with all the safety items that we want to make sure that they are aware of in relation to the selling fireworks and operations in the booths. And if I could have the next slide, please. A few safety items that I wanted to cover for this presentation this evening is the use of safe and sane fireworks for the public. First and foremost, the safe and sane fireworks have always, they will always have that seal from the state Fire Marshal's office as you see before you on the slide. Second, we'd like to reinforce that we want to keep fireworks at least 10 feet away from any structures to keep that safe distance and separation. Thirdly, we want to make sure we don't use any fireworks near flammable materials, especially grass, trees and shrubs and any kind of garbage debris. And next, we want to make sure that folks would have an extinguisher hose or some other source of water nearby to be able to extinguish a fire if it did start during any of the 4th of July fireworks celebrations as well. And lastly, and most importantly, this is something that's specifically been an issue in the past. Folks want to really be safe and put fireworks away in some types of container and often it's been placed in plastic containers to be able to get them out and covered up. And it's caused a few fires in the past for us. So we don't want to dispose of any recently used fireworks in garbage cans and any other receptacle that is, is not fireproof. So those are the, the primary safety concerns that we have from the Fire Department's perspective. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Police Chief Ryan Johansson.
Steve Johansson.
Thanks, Chief Delay. Appreciate it. If I can get my slide to advance here, I'll continue on with the presentation. So as, as Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you all know and as the community knows, the 4th of July is a major undertaking for your police department. This year will certainly be no exception. We are acutely aware of the fact that as we are coming out of COVID restrictions on June 15th and moving to a 4th of July holiday that falls on a Sunday on a weekend, it will no doubt be a very busy 4th of July, even among other 4ths of Julys. I also want to make sure that the community knows that the police department is acutely aware of the fact that while many revelers really enjoy the 4th of July and it's a big part, or for a long time has been a big part of what it means to live in San Bruno, to participate in 4th of July fireworks activities. There's also a significant segment of the population that is deeply troubled by the noise, especially things that come along with illegal fireworks use, both in terms of safety, the explosions, the things flying through the air. And as has been the case for many, many years here in the city of San Bruno, your police department will do absolutely everything it can to minimize the impact, the negative impact of the 4th of July celebration within our city. So beginning with some of the things we do each year and certainly are doing this year to prepare. Obviously, we, we always have this robust outreach and communications effort. Most of that is via social media. The Fire Chief already mentioned the Joint PSA with Fire. I think that the, the 4th of July celebration has been a part of San Bruno for so long now that most of the community knows what's allowed and what isn't allowed. And truthfully, what we're really asking for is for people to just do the right thing and comply with the law to begin with. This is not something that the police department is going to simply be able to enforce its way into compliance with because it is so widespread and involves so many people celebrating at the same time. So we really continue with the outreach, not because we necessarily need to educate the community so much as to ask the community to please help us to respect everybody on the 4th of July and celebrate in ways that are responsible, safe and that don't negatively impact the members of the community that really have a hard time with the loud explosions and some of the safety issues that come with fire. Namely, among those are any of our residents that suffer from PTSD and obviously pets have a great deal of trouble with the 4th of July. Additionally, pre-4th of July, we always go out and contact previous sort of problem locations, for lack of a better term, places where we've previously issued violations, citations, known residences that tend to have a number of illegal fireworks on the 4th of July. We maintain a list that rolls over year over year and we get out proactively just to try and remind them about the fines and to gain some compliance in advance. We also don't isolate our enforcement to the 4th of July alone. We deploy officers on an overtime basis to conduct proactive, unmarked unit enforcement of fireworks violations for several days leading up to the 4th of July and even for one to two days after the 4th of July, depending on when the 4th falls. And just in an effort to acknowledge the fact that for many members of the community, that we've gotten reports that fireworks are already starting and we're, we're still, you know, a few weeks away from the 4th holidays. So just know that we are out in advance trying to get on top of the problem. A big undertaking for us is every year, in collaboration with Fire, we author a formal incident action plan. This is a very robust document that covers basically all the contingencies that come with the 4th of July. Not just basic operations in terms of how we plan to address safety issues and illegal fireworks usage, but also in terms of how we'll respond to significant emergencies in collaboration with Fire if they, if they arise. The Fire Chief already mentioned these mandatory safety meetings with booth operators. Police play an active role in that as well. And then we issue informational warning notices to all city facilities so that we can get those out not only through police and fire, but through public works and permitting and all the other groups that tend to have contact points with the members of our community in order to just make sure that the word's getting out that the 4th is coming and what enforcement will kind of look like. So in terms of illegal fireworks enforcement, to clarify, safe and sane fireworks are permitted for use starting on the 28th of June from noon to 9:00 p.m. And then on the 4th, that expands from noon to 11:00 p.m. But technically, outside of those windows, even use of safe and sane fireworks, the ones that have the seal on it that the Fire Chief presented to us earlier, is illegal. They're, they're not to be used outside of those, those windows and timelines. Additionally, you're only permitted to use safe and sane fireworks on private property and you must always, as the Fire Chief said, be at least 10 feet away from any structures. Fireworks, including safe and sane, are not permitted in any city parks, public parking lots, schools or open space areas. Again, going with the fact that they must be on private property that does not belong to the public or the city. And believe it or not, misuse of safe and sane fireworks is dangerous and illegal and can also bring along with it the $1,000 fine that possessing or using illegal fireworks comes with. The most frequent violations we see in this regard would be the use of safe and sane fireworks in unsafe locations such as in open fields with grass or other fuels that can readily burn or the throwing of illegal, of legal fireworks or using them in a manner that is inconsistent with what is suggested by the manufacturer. All of those behaviors are illegal as well. Our response on the 4th of July is, as usual, all police department staff will be working the 4th of July. It's mandatory. Every single one of our employees is ordered into work so that we can have the best, most robust response possible to support the community and through what is, can be a pretty challenging holiday for a lot of people. So please know that while I'm quite certain it will never be enough, given the scope of the problems that we often face on the 4th, your police department is pulling out all the stops and doing everything we can to be available to you. I can tell you, as I tend to share every year, this is an illustration. My oldest daughter's birthday is the 4th of July and I have not been there for one of those for 19 years now. The 4th of July is a huge undertaking for us and just please know that your police force is working very hard to make it better for all of you. We will be using marked units, highly visible, unmarked units that are not visible, bicycle units that are not very visible and surveillance teams and unmarked surveillance vans, including surveillance equipment. So I mentioned this for a couple of reasons. One is for those of you who might call and have complaints about people using illegal fireworks. If you don't see a black and white unit show up on your street, that does not mean the police department did not respond to your complaint. Oftentimes, the black and white units are about the least effective method to actually affect arrests and issue citations because we stick out like sore thumbs and it's very easy for people to see us coming from a very long distance and move out of the way. So we make a much more robust use of unmarked units, most of which you will not recognize as police vehicles unless you get real up close and see people wearing uniforms inside of them. The same is true of bicycles and our surveillance teams. Please know that it is exceedingly difficult to put together what you need to put together to issue a lawful citation for violation of fireworks, of illegal fireworks use. Know that the officer has to actually on view, what we call on view, or actually witness firsthand the use of illegal fireworks, be able to pin it to a specific individual, be able to recover evidence, be able to safely detain that person and issue a citation for what really amounts to an infraction at the city municipal code level. So there are a number of challenges and just know that, you know, when you, when you call and you tell us that you've seen someone using illegal fireworks, we still by law have to witness that ourselves and take several steps before a citation can be issued. And so I can tell you from working this detail for the past 16 years, it is just not as simple as showing up and issuing tickets. Oftentimes, we're out of vehicles lurking around in the neighborhoods on foot for 20, 30 minutes in order to hone in on the source of illegal fireworks usage and issue citations. And we are doing those things, but they take time and take resources. And so we can't be everywhere all at once. We'll talk a bit more about that in just a moment. It is a $1,000 administrative citation for the use or possession of any illegal fireworks. The, the short list here, right, if you, we talked about the seal, but if there's no seal or you're not sure, generally if a firework flies in the air beyond about six feet or if it explodes, it is illegal. or if it explodes, it is illegal. And you can buy these things in what might seem like legal locations in the Bay Area. So a word of caution to the community that if it shoots in the air or it explodes, it is almost certainly illegal and could subject you to a $1,000 administrative fine from the city if you're seen by the police. Last year, we also used what we call social host citations. The municipal code does say that if your residence is deemed to be responsible for hosting a party or allowing illegal fireworks use to continue, we can cite the homeowner or person in, in control of that gathering. We do not have to find the actual individual who's lighting the fireworks themselves. And so please know that if you're hosting a party on the 4th of July, it is your responsibility to ensure that none of this is going on in association with your groups and your party. When it comes to reporting violations to the police, this is a more difficult area. And this is something that we have worked a lot with in terms of proving our theories over the last several years. And I'll try to keep it brief by saying that the vast majority of the citations we issued every year are the direct result of the proactive efforts of the police officers working the enforcement detail. Because as I previously described, it usually takes some time to kind of work your way into identifying and seeing exactly who's using the fireworks and to make that detention and issue the citation. And so what isn't a lot of value to us, and this is contradictory to most of what the police department relies on and does. You've heard me say many times that you are our eyes and ears as members of the community. And that remains true on the 4th of July, but only if you see very specifically an individual person who you can describe that is lighting off illegal fireworks. If you do have that information, calling the police's non-emergency number at 650-616-7100 is the best way to provide that information to us so that officers on the street can use it to hone in and issue a citation. What is not of value to us and in fact really distracts our efforts from getting to the source of the problems and issuing citations are the more vague reports. We are acutely aware of the fact that there are aerial fireworks and illegal fireworks being used all over the city on the 4th of July. So a reporting party that calls the police department to say, hey, it's been going on all night on my block, on, you know, the 100 block of X street or in this neighborhood or near that park. Honestly, the volume of those calls is nothing more than a distraction from the police department doing the best work that it can do in order to deter the illegal fireworks usage. So while we appreciate reports from the community and the public and at all times, this, this is a date where we'd ask that you use a measure of discretion and only make those calls and occupy the time of dispatchers who are handling hundreds and hundreds of calls over a really short span of time with good information that can be used to actually issue citations rather than just vague descriptions. So that concludes our presentation for both the fire chief and I. Thank you for your time and for giving us this opportunity to get out ahead of this a little bit and explain what's coming. I know there will be another presentation coming up closer to the 4th of July and then we always do the post 4th of July report to let the community know how the enforcement operations and other calls for service went. But for now, that's what we've got and I'm happy to address any questions or comments from council or the community.
Thank you very much to both chiefs. And if we could stop sharing the, the screen right now, bring us all together. But again, yes, but once again, thank you to both of you for your presentations. I do see council member Hamilton, hand is up, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Chief Delay and thank you, Chief Johansson for the, the presentations. I have a few questions. Will the, the PSA that's being put together for Channel One be made available online so we can spread it as far and wide as possible through our social media channels?
Yes, we'll always host a, a link to the video on our YouTube channel so that can be obviously disseminated very easily and then it'll be pushed out through all of the police department's social media networks as well.
Great, thank you. You talked about the proactive enforcement, the pre, pre-visiting the, the addresses where you've issued citations before. Are, will, will you also be able to visit addresses where you, we know that illegal fireworks have been used in the past, but we're unable to cite because of all the difficulties that you just mentioned about actually being able to get to the point of issuing a citation?
Yeah, essentially, we maintain a list of complaint locations, so it's not all attached to citations. In fact, in many cases, citations end up being issued to people who don't live in the city of San Bruno and they're not necessarily associated with a residence. So these residential follow-ups are mostly about large scale parties where we know there tend to be illegal fireworks used year over year.
That's great, okay, thank you. And then last question regarding the social host citations. Do you have a approximate number of how many of those were given out last year?
This is just from my own personal recollection. I don't have it in front of me now, but I believe there were four issued last year of the 30 some odd citations issued.
Okay, thank you.
We generally just, I'm sorry, just to be clear, we, we generally obviously are going to do the best we can to give the homeowner or the resident an opportunity to comply before issuing those citations because it's great to say you have to be in control of your party, but it's also a very difficult thing to do, right? And, and you can't keep track everywhere all at once. So we'll typically issue warnings and if we have to come back out for the same residence, that's when we'll issue those social host sites.
Great, thank you. I, I just want to acknowledge the, the, the hard work and the near impossibility of, of the job that, that your teams will have on the, on the 4th and thank you for it in advance, thank you.
Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you. So, so let me start by adding my thanks to council member Hamilton's appreciation to what both the fire and police have to go through to cover this, this event. And, and Chief Johansson, you especially having to make that, that family sacrifice every year in order to, to fulfill this obligation. It's, it's unfortunate, but I, it is appreciated. I backed up before the pandemic, I, I did a ride along and I, I can attest to the frustration. Oddly enough, I think we were 15 minutes into the ride along where the first citation was issued. Somebody who, you know, clearly a first time doing it, had no idea what they were up to. But then the rest of the night, we were chasing shadows and, you know, there were neighbors where there were lookouts for the people who were doing it and they saw us coming a mile away, even undercover. So yeah, it's definitely frustrating. I wanted to ask about the communication that's going to go out. And I, I've heard concerns from the community about, you know, the, the dryness, the windiness, the fires that we've been dealing with are still fresh in people's minds. Could there be a focus on that in the communication to sort of appeal to people's more practical sense and, and just really drive home that, the danger that there is from, from these aerial fireworks? You know, if at all possible, I don't know how far along the process is in, in getting that, that message out, but it seems like that's a very real concern that might help drive the point home. And I also wanted to share, I, just today, I was on a roundtable discussion that took place with the League of California Cities where, you know, there was almost 100 participants on that and everybody expressing the same frustration where, you know, they're, they're raising their fines up to the maximum. They're, you know, increasing enforcement and still having the same issues and concerns. So we're definitely not alone. You know, cities that allow, the safe and sane cities that don't allow safe and sane are all pretty much in, in the same boat. You know, some people are trying to get creative. They talked about using helicopters, using drones. I guess helicopters are really just not safe to fly in, in those situations. Some people had some success with drones, but we're definitely not alone. And so again, I just wanted to echo my thanks and I appreciate everything that you, that you all do.
Any other questions from colleagues? If there's anybody from the public who had a comment, please, now would be the time to raise your hand. If seeing no, no other hands up from colleagues or the public, I will just finish quickly that I did speak to the mayor of Pacifica this afternoon. Her and I had talked in regards to, as you know, they sell safe and sane fireworks as we do, which as a reminder, is a voter initiative. We, we will get emails, which we had, is just ban everything. It was a voter initiative in '05 that passed, as same as Pacifica has done. So they also take cautionary measures, bring extra staff on. And that's where, how we're paying for these extra services, whether it's public works, fire, police, et cetera, is through a, I'll call it a surcharge that is given and passed through to the client, to the customer. And that is what is deriving the monies and the resources that we're able to put on the streets. And unfortunately, as the, the Chief Johansson said, he hasn't seen his daughter's birthday. And everybody is called in, right? And so that means they're not with their fa, family and friends. And they're doing their best job to protect this community and everybody, it's all hands on deck. So I, I again want to thank both of you and your departments. And we will all be, you'll be in our thoughts and the same with the community as we embark upon this post 4th of July and our post-COVID times. So thank you again, appreciate it.